It's not a bad idea.
Yep. Test.
What's up? Check one, two, one, two. You hear me in the back?
I'm not gonna mess with him. He's keeping himself off the consent agenda, is that what he said?
That's what I thought he said.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know. It seems like this summer has always messed us with the, you know, like it did that in others' offices at one o'clock, remember?
You taking Michigan or Washington?
Hmm.
I forgot about this one too. I'm not gonna vote for the contract because it's an illegal contract. So I'm gonna move it on to...
We can use a tough question. Listen, it's Michigan and everybody else.
Yeah, I think that the, uh...
What are you talking about?
It's an illegal contract. So just go move it, you can discuss it, you can vote, and I'll vote separately. I don't really wanna talk about it, I just don't wanna vote, I'm staying.
Don't vote?
Yeah, they're, they're fast.
What's your prediction for this?
I got Michigan thirty-four, Washington seventeen. I think Michigan should run the ball down the road.
I wish we could get them to reset that clock.
And control the time?
Yeah.
I just said that, actually, a little bit ago I said that.
I know.
Might as well try and fix it tomorrow, or replace it, because it's five minutes fast.
Yeah, it's, it's like five minutes.
I think if you just get up there and reset it, it'd probably take it a while.
I think it's a, it's a...
What do you call it?
I did...
It's... Yeah, I was gonna say it's a...
Look it.
Yeah, it's like Greenwich Mean.
So you can't reset it?
I mean, just buy one of the garbage first. We'll buy one. Buy one when?
I'll buy one. I mean, the old-fashioned kind. Because I always look at the stupid thing and I don't have...
Yeah, it's not, I mean, I kept tapping my phone.
Right there.
Yeah.
He's coming back. He's coming back.
Yeah, and I think everybody else does too.
Alright, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, ready?
Yep.
Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission, it's Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty-four, it's seven PM. Uh, this evening we have Jerry Flinner here from the Trail, Friends of the Trail. You were up first, Mr. Flinner.
Uh, Jerry Flinner, one-six-four-eight-five, by Neerson Street in Buchanan. Uh, about a year ago, I was, uh, elected to the Marion County Trails on Board of Directors. And at our last meeting in December, awards were given out to every city and every township that contributed to the Marion County Trails Master Plan. The master plan is to connect as much as can be done from Indiana, which we're working on, through Niles, which would connect to us if we get, if and when we get ours done. And it's also, um, already, uh, coming up through New Buffalo, they've got it up to, um, the state park. And then the, the goal is to go north and then connect that to the Cal Haven Trail. So this is just a big thank you to the city of Buchanan, um, that I would like to make a presentation to show.
Thank you to you, Jerry, and, um, the rest of the Trail friends who do such hard work on our trail, thank you. Um, okay, will you join me for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please?
Dennison?
Here.
Whedon?
Here.
Wiansky?
Yep.
Money?
Present.
Swam?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, this is Money, I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
I wanna make a couple of motions, or a couple of moves. I wanna take the special hearing off the consent calendar. Um, I'm just asking for that to be voted on separately. And I want the city manager contract to be moved off the consent calendar for the same reason.
You're talking about the minutes, Wiansky?
He's talking about the minutes for the special hearing because he wasn't here.
Okay.
Um, I don't know where you wanna put that, where do you?
Um...
Under?
I'll take any suggestions, I would say new business personally, but...
Yeah.
Put it on C, under new business? And then we make a D, new business, for the contract?
Yeah.
Do you wanna move it to...
I would say for the contract, I would move it under unfinished business.
Oh, for the contract, he's giving back the unfinished, we'll do a B?
Yeah, and I think, uh, we have to move B down to C. And then, for new business. And then approve the minutes as B. So go minutes, then resolution.
We put it under B, under unfinished business.
I meant under new business.
Did you get all that, because I didn't?
So you want minutes to A, under new business? Yeah.
And then you just wanna drop the resolution one to B and resolution two to C?
Yep, that'll work.
And then unfinished business, B is, uh, Lynch's amendment to contract?
Yep.
Gotcha.
I just want an individual vote for each one of them, I don't want it on the consent calendar, because I don't wanna vote against paying the bills.
You wanna amend your...
So, um, Larry, would you, would you be open to changing your motion to approve the amended agenda?
Yes, uh, I would move to approve an amended agenda.
I'll second.
We have roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Wiansky?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to public comment, if you'd like to make a public comment on an agenda item, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes.
I'm Donald Reiman of three hundred thirteen West Front Street. Section four point nine of the city charter describes the functions and duties of a city manager. These include the day-to-day running of the city. Tim Lynch may not by contract with his city commissioners abdicate these functions and duties. These include the management and supervision of all departments, public improvements, works and undertakings of the city. The removal of all department heads and the hiring and firing of all city employees without the consent of the city commission. The city manager is responsible for the financial health of the city. Tim Lynch has all these powers and duties from which he cannot abdicate. The King of England can abdicate, the city manager cannot. The city commission has none of these functions and duties. All they can do is remove the city manager by three or more members and vote in a vote complying with the Open Meetings Act. If the city manager does not perform these functions and duties, the city commission's only course of act, in action, is to fire him. These provisions of the Buchanan Charter may be changed only by a majority vote of the Buchanan citizens. A contract between this, a contract between the city commission and the city manager claiming to change them is not valid. So Tim Lynch has all these powers and duties. He need only exercise them in the positive interest of the city. The only power of the city commission is to fire him.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make public comments?
I'm Carla Jackson Johnson. And I have here a signed document, a complaint and request for a hearing that I've signed. I, the undersigned, have reasonable suspicion to believe that Mayor Sean Dennison has violated Article Five, Section Two, one thirty-three of the Buchanan City Charter of nineteen forty-eight. He violated our city charter when he suspended Benjamin Eldridge without a notice of hearing and a full vote of the city commission. Our constitutional recourse for those who elected him as a city commissioner is to recall him as a city commissioner. That process is in motion. The city commission must call on Sean Dennison to resign for violation of Buchanan's charter. The first mayor in seventy-five years to usurp the powers and remove the city manager. The current city commission has a responsibility to the city charter they were elected to serve. Mayor Sean Dennison also violated MCL fifteen-two sixty-three, one, two, and three, that requires decisions be made at a public meeting. Failure to give notice in accordance with Section Five has interfered with substantial compliance and impaired the rights of the public under the Open Meeting Act. Complaint twenty-three-two-seven-five-six-six has been filed with the Marion County Sheriff's Department under Michigan law. Mayor Dennison also violated Michigan's employee right to know, Act three ninety-seven of nineteen seventy-eight, by refusing Mr. Eldridge access to the grievances against him. Mayor Dennison has violated the charter of the city of Buchanan. This charter clearly states that the city manager runs the city. One city commissioner, even if the ceremonial mayor, cannot suspend or fire a city manager. Only a majority of the city commissioners, in a meeting properly noticed under the Open Meeting Act, can remove a city manager. A single city commissioner does not have the power to suspend the city manager. Whatever that city commissioner intends, that single-person action to mean is irrelevant.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Thank you, Carla.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, let's move down to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
A motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll second.
We have roll call, please?
Wiansky?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to reports by departments, committees, and boards, starting with the Common Concert Series. Mr. Michael Rowland?
Well, thank you commissioners for the time to present this year's summer concert series schedule. Um, for over thirty years, Buchanan has been alive with music, um, every summer, and the common has been the mainstay of that. Our committee has created a mission statement of providing free and equitable music for the betterment of the community. And that last part is an important piece. Last year, we provided exposure and fundraising opportunities for sixteen different nonprofits, and raised over ten thousand dollars for those organizations. The shows held at the common are so much more than simply concerts. They allow the community to showcase ourselves to the residents and visitors alike. And our team alongside Live Buchanan, Buchanan Chamber of Commerce, are working diligently to deepen those involvements with the local business and charities, so the shows can help drive their missions as well. I'm presenting to all of you the dates, uh, which you have on your table, um, of all the acts this year. We are looking for approval for the use in, of the common, as well as the city center for restrooms and green room needs. Additionally, the current budget allows for a donation from the city to support these shows. Over the last ten years, that amount has been ten thousand dollars. As you probably know, the cost of these shows have increased exponentially over these last ten years. And we combated that with focused fundraising, partnerships, and opening an endowment that utilizes only the earnings, providing future dollars in perpetuity for concerts, lessening the burden on the city. Furthermore, we are currently in the process of applying for, uh, Public Spaces Community Places grant through MEDC. This grant will be used for important updates to the common. This will include a dedicated PA system, which will allow for organizations like the Fine Arts Council and Buchanan Library to have low-cost options, and allowing for better access to all organizations across the town. Um, as you may know, uh, the city council actually used to have, uh, several meetings at the common. Um, one of the things that has stood in the way of that is having PA, lighting, all of those things accessible, um, that are cost to the taxpayer. And this is something that would, would help with that, um, allow these underserved organizations to be able to better utilize the common. And, uh, create some, some funds for things like repairing the, the cement that we all know as damage, paint, um, all the, the things that normally the taxpayers would be on the hook for, um, to repair and upkeep with the common. Uh, this year's lineup has four nationally touring headliners, three music festivals, and a wide array of local and regional acts, in what is our most ambitious schedule in over thirty years. I'm willing to say that this schedule is probably the best summer lineup of any community in our region. I'm willing to say that, um, this is something that, um, is extremely important to our local businesses and, uh, community members. Especially considering the cancellation of Thrill on the Hill, um, we are thrilled to be the little piece that is gonna fill our community's culture bucket in place of that. Um, so we do ask for the city and the community's support. Um, please attend the concerts, please, uh, advocate for them, um, it's a big deal, not only, even if you're not a music lover, if you love small business, if you love access to our nonprofits, these are, these are what these are supporting. Um, so as I mentioned, the city has for many years budgeted, including this year, for support, and the season, and this season is no different. Uh, we'd be thrilled with your continued support of ten thousand dollars, but any additional funds are available, they would go a really long way, so thank you for your time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
How much money do you get from the marijuana dispensaries or companies in the city?
Uh, we do not get any funds from marijuana organizations.
Why not?
Uh, the biggest reason is, um, the funds themselves, the not, the non-endow and the endowment are held at Michigan Gateway Community Foundation, which is a federally recognized five oh one C three charitable organization, um, and we are unable to accept those dollars.
But you could accept them through the city, couldn't you, through Barb?
Um...
I mean, since you're out there anyhow, I mean, there's ways, laws are written by people like me and everybody else.
Right. Um, the thing is, 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 is we get financially audited every year. And this is an audit we take very seriously, um, we take the, the trust of our donors and the community members very seriously. Um, we wouldn't wanna go around, um, legislation to try just for some, to get some easy dollars. Uh, additionally, there are many, many ways for the dispensaries to help with the, with the concert series and get exposure through them, um, that are outside of donations, which is actually more advantageous for them. Um, so we love our, our partners, um, here in the community, um, all the marijuana dispensaries have been good, community members and support the concerts well. Um, but, um, from the side of staying in compliance, making sure we don't get ourselves, um, no one would wanna see Buchanan Promise go away because we took five thousand dollars from a dispensary, um, so that's why we don't do it.
Yeah, but you said there's other things that they could do, would you be willing to approach them for them other things, other than financials?
Yeah, absolutely, we, and we have.
Because I think they're a very intricate part of the community.
Yeah.
And I think they would love to be included in something like this, and I've been a very strong advocate to, to get them in part of the parks and the common.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I don't believe they've been approached.
We have approached them.
And I think it would be way better than a, a tax by City Hall on them.
Yeah, and we, and we have approached them, and, and there are some ways we're working with them to do different things, um, that's something that we keep in, in mind with everybody, we, uh... Every single member, especially in the downtown district, gets all of our information for sponsorship, and I personally introduce myself to every single dispensary to make sure that they know, um, what the situation is, to try to make sure they understand that we're not excluding them, um, we have, uh, in particular with like the Red Bud Roots folks, uh, we have great relationships with them. And, um, working to find ways to get them involved, and, you know, one day those political winds of change will change, and, you know, we'll have better opportunities to get sponsorship dollars from them. But, um, you know, from, from my seat, you know, as, as the president of Michigan Gateway, um, you know, I'm unwilling to, to risk important programs like Buchanan Promise and all the other grants that we do to be able to do that.
I fully understand that, Michael, I really do, because I've approached the township, I've approached the schools. But the city can, so I mean, any, any, I mean, they can donate a check to the city, and then the city can in turn, you know, if you want twenty thousand dollars from the city, advocate for them to give us some more money, directly through Barb to the common. I mean, there's ways of doing it, and you're in a position to do it. And I mean, I understand, I, I understand how intricate it is, because I was very, I got very educated down here when we were passing it.
Yeah.
And I have followed up on it, and I get emails every week.
Yep.
On the intricacies of it. So, but I would appreciate your help to help the citizenship, because I can't see the taxpayers, with this budget that we have, being able to give any more money than what we're, we're already giving. I really don't see that being possible.
Which is exactly why we built an endowment, and have been funding that and getting donations for it. Um, our donations have been going up and up every single year. Um, there is no lack of ability and, and willing to participate in this community for a concert series. I think everyone in this town knows how important it is to fill our culture bucket, how important it is for, for, um, our community to come together for these things. Um, so from that same point, we have been consistently going up, um, you know, I, I don't wanna be in the business of trying to find ways to maneuver around things to allow certain people to have access to something and risk these important programs that our community depend on. Um, every student in this community gets fifteen thousand dollars for Buchanan Promise. If an auditor comes back to us and marks us for taking those dollars, um, whether it's through a wraparound, through the city, some laundering scenario where we say we accepted them a different way, um, that could jeopardize our ability to honor those donors' wishes and provide those students those dollars for their important education, and I'm just unwilling to do that. So...
I believe our...
Hope that answers your questions.
And I believe our annual donation to the concert series is about to twenty-five percent of the total project budget.
Yeah, um, so our budget this year is thirty-eight thousand, um, to give you some, to give you some comparisons. Um, year over year, that's actually consistent, last year we were forty-one thousand. Um, given the fact that we have, um, in my opinion, four acts that, this year, that are in line with what we typically have for our, for our biggest act of the year. Three festivals, where the most we've ever done is one festival. Um, I anticipate, um, us having maybe double the amount of people that we've ever had at a concert series. Um, and we're here tonight asking for no different than what we've received over the last thirty years. So, we hope to, in the future, to involve that more, but we wanna earn that as well, that's why we're asking for this grant. Um, you know, that, that grant that I mentioned is a fifty thousand dollar matching grant. That's something that will repair all the concrete, it'll paint the common, it'll provide lights and audio. Um, you know, a great example is the Fine Arts Council, who does great work, is our oldest nonprofit in our community. Um, it's very difficult for them to be able to pay the licensing acts and then still pay for light, someone to do the lights and the sound for those acts. Um, the Into the Wild was the last one they did, cost them over five thousand dollars to do. Um, it's just not sustainable for a small nonprofit. Um, these updates through that grant, which will have nothing to do with, uh, taxpayer dollars, that's something that we will actually, you know, be working towards as a, as a separate nonprofit, um, are gonna provide those much-needed repairs and updates to the building to allow these organizations to do that. And how great would it be to have this meeting that we're having today on a nice summer night with the city council up there, something we used to do very often? Um, those are all things that are gonna be capable of it, and we're an organization that, um, is coming to, obviously with the quest that we have to do every year, but also coming with, um, updates on how we're trying to get away from having to be dependent on anybody. Um, rewind twenty years ago, this, this request we're asking today was how the concert series happened, without it, it doesn't. Um, now, this is something that is a very important contributor to it, uh, but it's a partnership, it's truly a partnership, you see it on our advertisements, this is something that is, uh, really based in a, a full, wide community effort. And before I forget too, um, May seventh, our committee is working, we're sending invites to, uh, the tree friends, to the trail folks, everybody that's involved with the common, because the common is involving all of those organizations. You see the trees that the tree friends have put all over the common, uh, the McCoy Creek Trail rides right next to it, um, we're all involved in this. And on May seventh is Love Your City Day, and we're gonna be advertising a full community effort to come down, do landscaping, clean up the common, clean up the inside of it, which is something that, um, you know, credit to Randy Hendrickson and his team, has been doing for years, free of charge to the city. Uh, these are all things that we're gonna take care of on this Love My City Day, um, do some real, uh, great volunteer work, and make sure the common is, um, up to speed for what we see as the best year we're gonna ever have.
Awesome.
So...
Great, thank you, Michael, please thank the rest of the board and everyone at Michigan Gateway.
We certainly will, thank you.
Up next is the chair of the Buchanan Tree Friends.
I think we need to take action on that, actually. So we...
Oh, there was a recommendation, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
So I'll motion to approve the concert schedule as presented, along with the already budgeted ten thousand for our annual contribution.
Is there support?
This is Money, I'll support.
We have roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Wiansky?
Yes.
Carries.
Thank you.
Sorry. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I've, uh, prepared a PowerPoint to guide us through this, um, as she's making sure that comes up, I just wanna point out that we've, uh, good news tonight, we've received seventeen, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Department of Natural Resources in two separate grants that we submitted in October. Um, I wanted to come and explain it to you, and explain it in front of the staff, so that they understand the implications of receiving this grant. We, uh, basically the grant has, uh, there were two separate grants that have been awarded together. The first grant, uh, with, the reason we did this and issued two separate grants, because I didn't, we didn't wanna confuse the DNR, uh, we knew that the money that we were requesting for our planning purposes was, uh, the first priority. Um, and so we submitted that, um, and then also a planting one, but they spoke to the, the man who's in charge of urban forestry for the DNR, and he put the two together and granted both.
Alright.
Just to remind you, we submitted a resolution to the commission that was drafted in October of twenty twenty-two, and then submitted to you in August of twenty twenty-three. That commission resolved from the Tree Friends to you, the commission, that we undertake, so we can go to the second slide, please? Um, just to remind you that our mission is to grow a thriving environment for Buchanan through advocacy, conservation, and education. So advocacy is us going to the DNR on behalf of the city as a group of volunteers, we worked with the city manager to submit this, uh, resolution. Um, uh, conservation, obviously the ends of the, of the grant will be improving the conservation, and then education, you'll hear when I tell you about our plans for the spring, that there will be substantial education, uh, efforts, so we are fulfilling our mission. The resolution, we asked the city commission to, uh, encourage, not encourage, but I guess encourage, the city manager to undertake a planning process. Um, we had a couple of meetings to advance the planning process, um, we learned of this grant opportunity for us to get some technical assistance for creating the grant, and so, uh, to that end, we applied. So can I have the next slide, please? Basically, there's four things that are happening in this. There's forty-five hundred dollars for planning, and I'll get into some specifics about what that means. There's also three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for training. Um, we have invested as a city in a tree inventory, we need to train staff on how to use the inventory. Um, we've been told by the DNR, if we're not using it, that we're, our, any future funding is gonna be in jeopardy for future plantings. Um, so, uh, right now, the expert in the inventory is Richard Martin, a volunteer. Um, we're lucky to have him, um, and I'll get into a bit when we talk about removals. Um, we're also at five grand for removals, and then the DNR says... Um, we're also at five grand for removals and then the DNR says, uh, when he saw that we had a separate one for planting, this was my error, I should have just put them all in one. Um, they're giving us four thousand for another planting and we were told that, uh, because this grant was given to us under the Inflation Reduction Act. Uh, because it was given under the Inflation Reduction Act, the city of Buchanan does not need to match this grant. This grant is fully to us. We meet requirements under the Inflation Reduction Act. Um, so it's important to know in the Inflation Reduction Act, funds will be available for the next four or five years. So our idea is to maximize the use of the inventory to incentivize the DNR to give us funds to maintain and grow our tree canopy. Um, the next slide, please. So in planning, um, we did the inventory and they gave us a plan with the inventory, not a plan, but sort of an outline of things we should do. Um, he said they can take that plan and in our conversations about a planning process, marry that with our ability to fund of the plan. The, our ability to fund the plan is not great. We have a, we have a plan that will be more expensive than we can actually accomplish. This program budget table will help us to understand the scope of what it would take for us to address all of the needs within the inventory, this significant part of the city infrastructure, which is our trees. Um, and, uh, so I look forward to actually getting deeper into that, but we'll be working with Mike and with the city manager in terms of that. Um, and then having a consultant from Davy Tree Group, urban forestry consultant that understands what it takes to have an actual tree plan for the city, which will be a five, ten-year plan for removals, plantings, maintenance. Um, that will be realistic, not beyond what the capacity the city is to do. But we need to be, and part of our advocacy role is to have you and staff understand that trees are significant infrastructure for our city. Um, so that's planning, forty-five hundred dollars for planning. This, when this work happens, our resolution to you is being fulfilled. Uh, the next slide, training. Um, our software for maintaining the inventory is twenty-five hundred dollars a year. It's a big number and we know the city doesn't have a budget for that, but we've kind of, uh, you know, we've, we're committed to it now. We asked for a, we asked for a tree inventory, they gave it to us. The software is twenty-five hundred dollars a year. We believe we could continue to go for funding to DNR, to other, uh, you know, foundations, other sources annually to fund that. But the point is the city needs to have it in their budget every year that this twenty-five hundred dollars needs to be spent. So we got a grant for the next twenty-five hundred dollars because when we did the inventory, we got two years of inventory software. So this gets us the next year. And seven hundred and fifty dollars for training. So, um, we want to train not just staff how to use it, but we as Tree Friends want to learn more. And we also would like ambitiously to, um, have citizens be able to use it themselves. Not to the extent where they can edit it, but maybe they can go in and look at their trees on Days Avenue or wherever they have, to see what, whether their trees are, uh, high-risk. And, uh, maybe, you know, understand what species they have and what's the diameter breast height and what's the condition from a certified arborist. Okay. So that's training. Removals. Um, we got five thousand dollars for removals. That's a good number. Um, will that take care of all of the forty to one hundred removals that we need to take care of in the town? Probably not, but it's a start. And we will, and we said it, we said it in the grant. But we can ask for one, one of these next year and we think that what we want to do, and Richard and I and the Tree Friends are talking about it, is putting in a volunteer army, not army, a corps, of volunteers who will go out this winter and go to every tree that's been identified as a hot, high or moderate-risk tree and put eyeballs on it. And maybe even a little mark, we got to talk about it, whether that's going to be appropriate or not. We don't want to scare homeowners that. But whatever, we're going to figure out some way for us to go out and identify which of the high-risk trees are the highest-risk trees. And then present it to Mike and his team and then with this five grand, they can either hire contractors or they can do it themselves or whatever it's going to take. But that's what we hope to do with the removals. Makes sense? Next. Planting, four grand. Now, we've got some funds because our friend Jason passed away, Jason Leets, and a lot of people gave because he put it in his obituary to, uh, in lieu of flowers. And we raised how much, Rich?
Well, I'd, I'd say probably close to fifteen hundred, two thousand.
So, so we've got two thousand dollars for those plantings. We have some other monies that are available between those plantings and this. We're going to have a really good spring of planting. So, um, that's it. Um, do you have any questions?
I'm curious, are there any other local communities that, that have a, a robust tree program like this that we, we compete for these funds against?
The, um, I was in conversation with a woman over in, uh, Michiana Shores that received a grant under this. Um, thirty-eight communities were issued grants like this. They like us. They like us because, you know, we're, you know, Annie Tuitt started it, Rich, um, others that were just aggressive and, and looking for things and, um, you know, we're, it's, it's fun. You know, they come here, pictures are taken, people planting trees. What's wrong with that, right? You know, we got an auger, you know, now the auger works, we got a watering can, tank, that works. You see Rich out there with different people watering trees all the time.
He works on them.
But it's, you know, it's, it's, uh, you know, uh, controversies come and go. Trees don't. Trees are here forever, you know, and the stuff we're going to be doing, we want to be planting a lot of trees out in the brownfields here over the next five, ten years. I'm never going to see the benefits of that. Most of the people in the Tree Friends aren't. But we do it because if you read the history of this town, it's like this is our town and we, we want to do, while we're here now, we want to do the right things now to make the town a better place, not for us, but for the people that come after us.
Good for you.
Have you contacted the Conservation District at all? Um, I don't even know how they would be involved if they could be involved. I've been in touch with them the last thirty days. That's the only reason why I ask. Um.
Educate me, Dan.
Well, it's, the state of Michigan did this and I, I don't know as much as, I, you haven't, obviously. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to find out more because I got to know there was a open chair that was supposed to be open for that Con- Conservation District and they're in Barren Springs, but we already have a representative from Galen and he decided he was going to run again. So I dropped out. Because I didn't want to, he's, he's been in charge, but I've already left him a message that I want to get to know him. So I will pass that on to you.
I personally looked into getting on that when I moved here, when I was looking for things to get involved in. And it looked like too complicated of a process for me to get involved in personally. So I'd like to learn more. I mean, maybe it's something that I'd go for.
Well, I've got his number, so I will, I will be in contact and I want to.
But do they, are they a funding organization?
I am not, they, they help a lot. They're, they're federally and state-funded, so they would be help, they would be a help. But I will, I will.
My, my, my understanding is they provide expertise and, um, we always could use expertise.
Well, I will, yeah, I will. And then I wanted to volunteer to mark your trees. Uh, you know, Red, I'm in a vehicle by myself. I don't have to worry about anybody else's feelings, so I feel that's something I could do quite well.
We'll let you know when we're, you know, when we're gathering volunteers to do that work.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I know I'm the only thing between us and a football game, so.
Just thank you very much. The work is incredibly important and couldn't be doing it without the, the work of the volunteers. It's fantastic.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Okay, going down to unfinished business, amendment number, excuse me, amendment number four to owner-engineer agreement. Consider approving amendment number four. The purpose of this amendment is to finalize the easement acquisition costs that were estimated in amendment number two of the owner-engineering agreement. The amendment is also to request approval of Prayna Newhoff's twenty twenty-four hourly rates. This was on our agenda at the last meeting. It got postponed until, uh, city manager Lynch could look at the new rates and he has reviewed them and requested the commission, or I'm sorry, and recommends approval. Would someone like to make a motion?
Sean will move to approve amendment number four, owner-to-engineer agreement as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
We have a roll call, please.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Since it's going to pass, I'm going to vote no.
Money?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. And then I believe we're going to talk about, uh, we moved B here, right? We moved the, uh, consider.
Contract, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the city manager contract amendment. Consider approving the amendment to Tim Lynch. Uh, there was something in the original contract, um, that needed to be added. I couldn't approve it without the commission's approval because I'm not allowed to do things without the rest of the commission's approval. And I want to make sure that I'm doing things correctly. So, here we are. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Yeah, the amendment was for vehicle allowance.
It was for his vehicle allowance, yes.
I'll motion to approve the contract amendment as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money. Excuse me. This is money. I'll support that.
We have a roll call, please.
I'd like to make one comment before we vote. It is an illegal contract. Um, and that's why I insisted on moving it out of the consent calendar and it's illegal in the sense that we only give him the authority to dismiss or suspend somebody for three days, which is illegal, completely illegal. We didn't have any meetings as a commission whatsoever to approach him. So, um, that's, that's the only statement I want to make.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business.
Yeah, we got a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
No.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now moving down to resolution twenty twenty-four oh one. Sorry?
It's the public hearing minutes is A.
The special meeting.
I thought we were putting that down on the.
No, we did that one first.
Oh, we moved it here. And so these are all moved down?
Yep.
Okay, so item A. Someone like to make a motion to approve the special hearing minutes from December eleventh, twenty twenty-three?
Sean makes said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money. I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
I have a comment on that, too.
Sure.
There was no public comment before the hearing on that. And all of the motions that they're going to go through now had to be done twice. Um, and I'll just leave it at that. It was a debacle and that's why I didn't come.
We have a roll call, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
No.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Now moving on to new business. Um, resolution twenty twenty-four point oh one slash oh one, consider resolution twenty twenty-four oh one slash oh one. City commission authorized city personnel to execute documents replacing the environmental restrictive covenant on behalf of the city Buchanan for the city-owned property at four oh one River Street. Rich, do you want to just give us a real quick rundown?
Thanks, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, this is a project that we've been working on together for over a year. Um, I'm happy to report we are at the final, uh, steps to achieve our objective, which is to remove a restrictive covenant on four oh one East, uh, River Street for the benefit of the public. That's a nine-point-five acre parcel, uh, that is owned by the city that was the former parking lot of Clark Equipment. And, uh, for many years, there was a restrictive covenant on that property that, um, essentially precluded it from being developed for anything. And, um, we had, uh, worked with, uh, attorney Jim Enright, um, who had led negotiations with the various parties, Eagle and with the now apparent group of Clark Equipment, uh, and, um, came up with a restrictive covenant that is acceptable to all. And so now what we can do is record the new covenant and, um, record a, a separate document that rescinds the original covenant. And now that property will be allowed to be used for many, uh, uses, uh, that we see potential for redevelopment efforts there. So, um, this, uh, resolution is something that attorney Enright recommended that we, that you execute, that gives, uh, tur- that gives, uh, city manager Tim Lynch and Kella the authorization to execute the documents. Uh, once they're executed and notarized, uh, we will record them. And then this property will be, um, able to be redeveloped. And that's, uh, something that could be a very significant, uh, addition to our tax base, uh, which will affect our budget posi- positively. Uh, could, uh, be a project that retains or, um, increases jobs for Buchanan. So, this is great news. Uh, with real estate, sometimes it does take, uh, some time because there's details and there's parties to negotiate. In this case, we feel like we're at the finish line and, uh, with your, uh, authorization tonight, we can move forward and record the documents.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'd like to change the wording on this to city clerk and city manager, uh, rather than just personnel. Um, Mr. Ben was very intricate. I was a commissioner when we authorized the lawyer. Mr. Eldridge was very aggressive about getting this done. And I would like to specifically put this in the city manager's and the city clerk's forte. I don't like the word personnel.
I would just, uh, in response to that, the no, therefore we resolve language that gives the authorization is specific. And then it allows a city manager and clerk. It's just in the title of the resolution is the word personnel.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four oh one, dot oh one slash oh one as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
We have a roll call, please.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
One more thing, um, Mayor Commission. Uh, we will be preparing, uh, a resolution that we have for, uh, other city-owned properties that authorizes the sale of the city property and that is expected to come before you as soon as perhaps your next meeting.
We're not doing RFPs on them, are we? Thank you.
I'll let you ask a question. I may not answer it at this moment, but what's your question?
Why would, why would the owner not want us to ever develop a parking lot? We did the, you know, we told us to poison under it or something?
So I can answer that if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, when they gifted the property to the city, basically they wanted to be absolved of any liability, whether at the time or future, depending on kind of like, you never know what's going to come down the pipe on what's no longer legal to be on a site or what's not. To our knowledge, that site is clean. And it was just a liability situation for them. So, that's it. And they've walked, and they negotiated a way for us to use the property going forward, which is fantastic for us and our citizens.
I'd like to add to that. I was on the commission in between fourteen and eighteen. We bought that property then. It was cheap. So I was very shocked when I became a commissioner five years later to find out there was still restricted covenants on it. I would have thought that would have been cleaned up soon as we bought it. But all them people are gone, so I won't badmouth them. Thank you.
Okay, moving down to, uh, the next item. Consider resolution twenty twenty-four oh one slash oh two, a resolution for the city commission censure, city commissioner Dan Bianski. Anybody like to make a motion?
This is money. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four oh one dash oh two, a resolution for the city commission censure. Uh, city commissioner Dan Bianski as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. There are discussions.
So you're going to ask me to leave all the committees that I'm on? Who are you going to put on them committees? You have a Barb meeting Wednesday night. You put me on Barb because Mark didn't show up. You were on Barb and you didn't do anything while you, uh, were on Barb. Nothing. Ashley quit because Ashley did not run Barb, even though she's a wonderful volunteer.
She quit because she didn't want to be around you.
No, that's not the reason.
Okay.
You know, if you want to get nasty, I know how to get nasty. I know how to get nasty, sir. But I'm not going to get nasty. Are you going to let me finish?
No. Point order. We will address appointments to boards at the time that those applications are present. That is not the topic at hand.
No, 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 no. I'm a commissioner. There is no application process here. Don't play that game. Who are you going to put on?
The motion on the floor is to remove.
Who are you going to put?
But we're not discussing that right now.
That is not.
It's part of the resolution.
The, the resolution is to remove you.
It's to remove you. It's not about replacing you.
It says, wait a minute. It says right here.
We will seek active application.
Board of Directors of the Buchanan Area Recreational Board and Joint Board of Joint Water Sewer Board.
Right, to remove you.
To remove you.
Exactly. That's what I'm asking.
No, you're saying how are we going to replace you?
No, how, who are you going to replace me with? I mean, I thought I said it fairly clear. Did I say it fairly clear?
I think I said it fairly clear. We'll begin the application process after.
You don't need applications for commissioners. You appoint the commissioners to the boards, Patrick. Where are you going with this?
We have to go through that conversation.
You have a meeting on Wednesday night. None of you would be sent on the board. None of you are qualified to sit on the water sewer board.
Point order. Can we proceed, please?
No, you cannot. You're going to answer my question.
I'm not obligated.
You're, I'm not talking. You're, I'm not talking.
We have a motion on the floor.
The first thing is to.
And you have discussion.
Right.
And I'm discussing it. And that's part of the resolution.
But the answer is, we will, we will, we'll deal with it when we come to it.
You're coming to it. You have a meeting Wednesday night.
It's Monday.
And today's Monday.
Right.
So how are you going, who's going to put in an application as a commissioner? And who gives you the, we don't do applications for commissioners. None of you are my supervisor. I'm your equal. You have a gavel. That's the only difference between you and me. You have a gavel. It's stupid. Well, you don't, sit in this chair, missy.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Can we have a roll call, please?
You don't have the right to speak out either.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
And I am told from section seven-point-five that Dan Bielski.
I don't even have the right to vote.
The right to vote.
I was going to abstain anyhow.
Thank you. Motion carries.
So now what are you going to do?
Thank you. I'm going to move down to communications. Do you guys have any communication?
No, you're asking me to resign. Are you formally going to ask me to resign?
That was the formal ask.
Well, I'm going to give you my answer right now. No. And that's as light as I can be.
Good, moving down to item twelve.
Hope you got the governor's phone number.
I do.
Good, so do I.
Moving down to communications. So you have any communication?
No.
All right, going to public comments on non-agenda items. Anybody who's wanting to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium. Okay.
Because I know Patrick is grimacing as I come up here. I just wanted to make a quick motion, or a quick note for Michigan Gateway Community Foundation. Our applications for scholarships open up on Monday, January fifteenth. That's both for Buchanan Promise and our general applications for scholarships. So if you know a young person, if you have a young person in your household and you're looking for opportunities, those could be both, you know, traditional school and four-year degree. It could be a two-year community college. It can be even the trades. Please reach out to the foundation if you have any questions, and we are here to help. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Okay, moving to commissioner comments. Commissioner Whedon?
Good.
Mr. Swam?
Just a quick thank you to the Tree Friends, Gateway on the Concert Series, and Rich and the team on removing that covenant. Great work, everybody. Thank you for getting your, getting it done.
Commissioner Bielski?
Oh, I got a whole bunch to say. The dog and pony show of this joke of a commission. I thought it was bad when I was commissioner before, but this is insulting. And when the taxpayer, you say I'm insulting? Wait till you get the bill from the lawyer for all this garbage they've been doing. You know, that's part of it. Wait till you get the bill for the water and sewer for the line that's going to run down Chippewa, because they won't insist on the township and. I'm not finished. I am not finished. I've thought about this for thirty days. I have stepped up. I have stepped out. I have put my neck out there when it comes to three and a half percent increase in your school taxes, and I got discriminated against. I got called an old man on oxygen. Be careful of old man, Mr. Busby. I've been a racist, a sexist, a hostile. Point of order, your honor. Are you going to call him out? You would have already had me escorted out of here. Well, my fault, and I practice trying not to do it. The thing about it is, is there's a lot behind the scenes that goes on that is not known down here. And the fact that these people want to spend the time, spend the taxpayer dollars to throw me out of office is an insult. They already have a recall. Good luck to all the people that are going to get the signatures. Good luck beating me in the election, because you won't. And the governor will not come down here to throw me out. I can almost guarantee you that. That's all I got to say, your honor.
Mr. Money?
I want to thank Jerry Flanner for, once again, his work on the trail. Mr. Murphy and the Tree Friends, great job out there. You guys are, you know, doing a real benefit to the city of Buchanan. Once again, I always like to say thank you to this commission for the hard work that they do, and specifically our mayor, because of all the hard work he's done to put in the work to keep this city moving forward. And that's all I have.
Thank you. While I have the floor for comments this evening, I'd like to take the time to thank all the volunteers in our community and all of the organizations they belong to for all the work they did in 2023 to make Buchanan better. I failed to do that at our last meeting in December, and I wanted to be sure to let you know that I appreciate everything you do to make life better here. I also want to thank all of the city employees for their hard work and for everything they do for us. I'm sometimes criticized for continually praising and defending our city staff, so I wanted to take a second to address that and make sure that the general public understands something. Finding good, talented municipal workers is not an easy task. Oftentimes, they could make much more money in the private sector doing the same type of work, but they choose to do this. We need to be conscious of the fact that they're not easily replaceable, and they do not deserve to be called out by name and crucified at public meetings. And I would encourage everyone in our community to show them the praise and the respect they deserve. We're lucky to have them. Finally, I'd like to spend a moment this evening defending my name. I've sat here for weeks, listening to people criticize me, attack me, question my ethics and integrity, and quite frankly, I'm done with it. I have no problem with anyone who disagrees with the decision that I have made. You have the right to disagree, but there are ways to do that that do not include making a mockery of our local government and putting our community in a bad light, just because you disagree with the way a situation was handled. So I want to be crystal clear. None of the events leading up to the circus that has recently been playing out in our city were due to any actions of Sean Dennison. I didn't have any complaints filed against me. I didn't break any rules of procedure. Everything I've done in my capacity as mayor over the course of the last few months is exactly what I'm required to do, what I'm obligated to do, and what I would expect from anyone else serving as mayor to do. I took an oath to uphold the ordinance of this city and to follow the rules procedure for this board. I'm tired of seeing my good name dragged through the mud, and I'm prepared to spend my personal resources defending it.